From the council.
You comfortable with serving a term through September 2024?
I think so. I'm not going anywhere. So I this is something that I not moving. So. So, yes.
Oh, Council.
I just wanted to say I I appreciate your answer to a council member Schaefer's question. I actually was about to ask the same question. So thanks for asking. I appreciate your answer.
Oh. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, Ron, like I mentioned, these interviews can be pretty brief. So unless there's any other questions. Council, I think we do you have any questions for us?
No, I you know, the the description of the of the position is very wide open in terms of the response, you know, it's very general. And that's great because it define it. The one aspect of it I do like about engaging people in our history and then I'm always thinking about. I was a professor at I was a lecturer at Humboldt State in history. Well, as the principal of Six Rivers Charter High, and I have the students there and I taught history at Eureka for nineteen years or something like that. So I I I think that connecting young people to the what's what's happening. What the history here is super important and to connect the connect them to the whole story, including what what existed prior to white civilization is settlers is is also extremely important.
Well, Ron, thank you so much for applying. Later on in our agenda, we will be voting on this. So feel free to tune in in the comfort of your home. If you'd like to see.
Thank you.
Touch on that. So thank you again for applying. Really nice to meet you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, so.
Did we lose Sophia? All right, well.
We did, but she's coming back on just.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I wasn't trying to bail on you guys. Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the March third regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We do want to encourage everyone to keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that by wearing masks and practicing social distancing, we can reduce the spread and keep our businesses open. Please support our business by masking up in Arcata. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. First, if you are logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click on Raise Your Hand on the right hand side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item, you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute you. You will then have two minutes to comment. Second way, you can access the meeting by phone. Call the number that's at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone and then overhand. When it is time for public comment item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. Will hear a prompt to indicate your phone and you and will have two minutes to comment. And if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the city clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Pereira.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
All present.
Okay, hold on a moment. I do apologize. So for ceremonial matters, I don't have some immediately right in front of me. Okay, so. Have a proclamation recognizing March 2021 as International Women's Day. Whereas since 1909, International Women's Day has been a time of acknowledging, celebrating, and honoring the work and contributions of women and girls to humanity. Whereas for the past year through the COVID-19 pandemic, we take this moment to honor the care and generosity, not only of so many women, but of men, children of all ages, elders, friends, and family who have supported both life and passing. Where everyone, including parents, healthcare workers, grocery clerks, farmers, educators, librarians, bus drivers, healthcare scientists, medical researchers, counselors, and government employees have put a phenomenal effort. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes March eighth, 2021 as International Women's Day and encourage all community members to join with all women in saying thank you and continue to work together to create a safer, more inclusive and care. Signed today by myself, and we will make sure this gets to where it needs to go. Okay, next ceremonial matters, a proclamation recognition of Girl Scout Week, March seventh through thirteenth, 21. Whereas March 12th, 21 marks the 109th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Jill Gordon Low of Savannah, Georgia, 1812. And as throughout its long and distinguished history, striving has inspired millions of girls and with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character, helping girls gain leadership skills and learn the lifelong lesson of contributing to their communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby designates the week of March seventh through thirteenth, 2021 as a Girl Scout Week and applauds Girl Scouting's commitment to developing the leadership skills of American girls. Assigned today. So we will make sure this to the Girl Scouts. Third and ceremonial ceremonial matters is a proclamation and recognition of Sunshine Week, March fourteenth through twentieth, 2021. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to start a dialogue on the importance of open government and the freedom of information. And whereas Sunshine Week is a nonpartisan initiative whose supporters are considered liberal and from every group in between. Sunshine Week participants in print, broadcast, and online news media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others interested in the public's right to know. And whereas open government is establishing and maintaining the people's trust for government and in the ability to serve the people effectively. The free flow information keeps government processes honest. Sunshine Week empowers people to play an active role in their government at all levels and strengthens their access to information that makes their lives better and their communities stronger. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby names March fourteenth through twentieth, 2021 Sunshine Week and encourages all residents. This is that effect their lives. At least we have a proclamation in recognition of March for Meals Month, March twenty twenty second, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition. Older. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center observes the National March for Meals Campaign to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger and isolation in our communities. Whereas through the Older Americans Act Nutrition Programs, the Humboldt Senior Resource Center has served the Arcata community admirably for forty six years. The center provides nutritious meals to seniors which help to maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and or premature institutionalization. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Arcata that March 2021 is March for Meals Month. The council urges all residents to honor the foundations, service organizations, businesses, and individuals who support our senior nutrition programs as well as the seniors they serve. Okay. Next, we move on on to our agenda, a report by Commissioner Committee. And we have our annual report from the Historic Landmarks Committee is our chair. William here. He is. Phil, can you unmute yourself? Perfect.
Well, I have some silly background, but I imagine you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, we'll just leave that background. I guess it looks okay. Hello, Mayor Pierre and Vice Mayor Watson and other council members. My name is William Rich, and I serve as the current Historic Landmarks Committee Chairperson. I am here this evening to present our annual report regarding the sorts of actions our committee has been taking and the discussions we've been having over the year of 2020. The Historic Landmark Committee typically meets once a month. Since March, this has obviously been over Zoom. And although we've missed several meetings this year, the change to virtual meetings has gone well, and there's not presented any problems that we couldn't overcome. We look forward to meeting together in person when it's safe to do so. Our committee is composed of, besides myself, a vice chair Jill McDonald. Jill is historic preservation professional and a realtor specializing in spirit homes. We're happy to have Chairperson Tim Keefe on the committee as well. Mr. Keefe is an environmental planner, an archaeologist with Caltrans, has many years of experience with various types of historical resources within the state within the state and federal regulatory context. Our newest chairperson is Alex Stillman. We are grateful that she joined us this year. Miss Stillman brings many years of experience from her work in Arcata. She is recognized as a historic preservation leader in our community. And so true advocate for Arcata's unique history. Miss Stillman also serves as the current president for the Arcata Historic Sites Society. We have one position open, and I saw earlier that that person is interested and submitted an application, Mr. Perry. We look forward to meeting Mr. Perry. Perhaps this coming month. We are saddened by the loss of of Don Tuttle this year. Mr. Tuttle was serving as our committee chairperson at the time of his passing in mid-May. He was truly dedicated to humble history, and his loss was felt widely over our community. We are grateful for Don's service. We believe that our committee brings valuable experiences and a wide range of technical expertise and knowledge. Over the last year, our committee has engaged several interesting projects. These include the outstanding restoration and preservation efforts of the historical Chapman House at 974 Tenth Street. This building was constructed in 1874, was recently restored to near original condition. The property is now enrolled in the city's Mills Act, the first one, and is one of about ninety recognized landmark buildings in the city. The HLC also provided direction for the redevelopment of the property at nineteen eleven eleven ninety-two I Street. Unfortunately, the existing structure built in 1863 has fallen into an advanced state of of disrepair and neglect, and really it precluded the ability for a true sense of restoration. However, the applicant recognizes this and will be reconstructing the building using the architectural defining elements as a guide. The committee has worked with community stakeholders with final language and placement location for several plaques on the plaza. This would be the Jacoby Storehouse plaque and the plaque for the Women's Temperance Fountain. We are continuing to discuss and finalize updating of the 2012 draft Arcata Historic Context Statement prepared by Grera and McBane. This document is an important tool for defining the rich architectural periods represented in the city. Recommendations to finish this report include the addition of a much of much more information acknowledgement regarding the city's pre-settlement history and to include input and coordination with the three Wiaut area tribes. We also discussed and revisited the draft nomination register. The the draft national registered nomination for the center area of the plaza. This was previously brought to our attention, and the HLC had provided recommendations to designate a more broad period of significance. Better defining contributing and character defining elements of the plaza. The creation of plaques or signage for the plaza's center has been discussed within this context. And the HLC encourages ongoing coordination with stakeholders and tribes to ensure this will reflect the community's interests. Finally, we have been assisting with development what has been called a rapid assessment checklist for historic buildings within the city. This will help city staff with making ministerial decisions affecting potentially noteworthy and landmark buildings at the counter. We have also designed a subcommittee embarking on a re-survey of city neighborhoods and continuing the survey and evaluation efforts completed for the Bayview neighborhood several years ago. We hope that someday each building within the city will be assigned a preliminary status with regards to historical significance. But in the interim, to have a checklist in which can be used by city staff as project applicants seek permitting for actions on these buildings. In the same area, the HLC has helped guide development of historic builders, a historic builders list that applicants can use when faced with the need to consult with construction professionals and historical research specialists. Those are some of the things that the HLC has been doing over the year 2020. And that's what I have to present. Thank you for 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 this time and having me come.
William, thank you so much. You definitely have had a busy year despite everything that's been been going on. So thank you for that report. I'm now going to ask for questions from the council, starting with Councilmember Goldstein.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for preparing the report and coming to speak with us.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, no, no questions, but as both a local and a historian, but not a local historian, um, thank you for all the work that you guys do, and it's really important in this community. So thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
No questions, but thank you very much for all of your hard work.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yeah, could you talk a little bit more about the plaque for the Women's Temperance Fountain? It's I know that's something that I've been working on, and there was another group, it's like temperas vedus or something that offered to pay for the plaque. And I hadn't heard any details on it recently.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm not exactly familiar right this second with the language that we've developed for the plaque. We have been discussing quite a bit about where the plaque would go. We've recognized that it's not appropriate to put the plaque on the fountain itself. And we've thought that maybe in the in the sidewalk next to the fountain would be a more appropriate. We've been discussing the idea of of the QR codes as perhaps being another good idea to convey more information in a small amount of area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Okay, with that, William, thank you again, and please let the the rest of the committee know that we're incredibly grateful for for all your work.
Thank you very much for having my time. I feel be amiss if I didn't note the good work of David Loyah and Deila Freitas. She's been helping us quite a bit, and we appreciate their their expertise. Thanks for having me.
Great, thanks. Take care. Okay, next on our agenda, we have early oral communications. This fifteen minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers during this fifteen minute period. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
We do. Our first speaker is Screen Daniel. Go ahead, Daniel. You'll have two minutes.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Please go ahead.
Okay, good evening, all mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you and address my concerns. I am addressing my concerns about the scout hut in Redwood Community Forest. As you know, my name is Daniel Bixler. I'm a homeowner and a resident of Arcata. And also, I am one of two group scout masters of a fully inclusive scout group. It's called the 124 Redwood Rangers here in Arcata. I started that about three years ago, and it's part of the Baden Powell Service Association US, which is also a worldwide organization that's fully inclusive for boys, girls, or whoever you are. I have three concerns about the scout hut. I've met with the Kiwanis in the Boy Scout group up there and talked to them about using it over a year ago. And and also with the Parks and Recreation Department. And they said to get insurance, and so our nonprofit group, you know, bought a hundred fifty dollar insurance. And we have not been able to use it still. And a part of that is talked about a tree that recently fallen down. But it takes me to, you know, one of my other concerns is that this is a public property that the Girl Scouts of America and the Baden Powell Service Association have no access to, even though it is public property. And, you know, I just have some serious concerns about a conflict of interest with the Kiwanis managing it because they do have scout leaders in the Kiwanis, and it seems like a little bit of a conflict. Not to mention historically what happened with the initial ninety-nine year lease, which I, you know, I'm concerned about. And the other thing is that, you know, when I was up at the park just recently, you know, there were scouts and scout leaders up there unmasked. I didn't see any sanitation around or sanitizer, and it's just.
Daniel, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. And yeah, feel free to, if you have anything else to add, you can email us always.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Daniel. Any other public comment?
Taking a moment to check for any other public comment. Do not see any additional public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of February seventeenth, 2021. B, biweekly report on general warrants. C, approve amendment number one to the park site lease between the Historical Site Society of Arcata and the city of Arcata. D, request the annual engineer's report in preparation of notices to declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts to include Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, Windsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. Item E, authorize grant agreement with Coast Central Credit Union for the Arcata Marsh Interpretive Center Native Plant Garden Recreation Project should the city receive the award in April 2021 and authorize the city manager to sign all applicable documents. And lastly, item F, approve a letter urging the Department of Toxic Substance Control DTSE to prioritize the remediation of the former McNamara and Pete Blumberd Mill Site to protect the Mad River city's drinking water source from contamination. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item? Okay, is there any member of the public or staff that requests an item be removed from the consent calendar?
No member of the public.
Okay. May I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
I.
Councilmember Goldstein.
I.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Hi.
I vote I as well. Motion passes. And next we move on to old business, and that's item A, Arcata Police Department's update on police reforms. May I have a staff report from Police Chief Ahern?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, mayor and council members and city staff and members of the community. This is a an update on our reform efforts within the police department. Primarily tonight, I'll be reporting out on our MIST program. But before I get into those specifics, I would like to let you know that we have finalized the process to return our fourteen long guns back to Cal OES through the Law Enforcement Support Office Program. That was in an effort to to return any military equipment that we may have procured over the years. So we were in a holding pattern. The process to actually return the rifles was suspended. That suspension has since been lifted. Those rifles have been returned. We no longer have any military equipment here in the police department. The ongoing work of the Public Safety Committee continues, and we've had a couple of different subcommittee reports out on the civilian oversight models as well as social service positions to implement within the police department. So we'll have some additional updates in in the next few months on the work of the Public Safety Committee. Let me shift briefly to our MIST program. MIST really came to us in 2018, and it was an opportunity for a behavioral health clinician to work alongside an Arcata police officer one day a week for a limited number of hours. But it was a tremendous value because they focused on the top ten list of chronically homeless people in Arcata, specifically those who were experiencing some behavioral health challenges. And often I would wonder, well, why do we pass by so many other homeless people who are in need of services and only focus on the top ten? Our Acting Sergeant Heidi Gristman always reminds me, hey, chief, we have to stay focused on the top ten because you never know when they're ready to accept help. And, you know, that makes a perfect sense. The funding for that program expired in June of 2020. And so we were really at a crossroads is what can we do to continue to have our Department of Health and Human Services personnel through Humboldt County continue to have, you know, a presence here in Arcata and a voice in terms of, you know, how we can provide services to those in need. And so working with Department Director David Loyah's department there in community development, credit to his his staff as well as Eileen Verbeck, our police business manager. They were able to identify CARES Act coronavirus response monies that you all, as a council, approved for use to basically reimburse the salary of two behavioral health clinicians to work here in Arcata. So these will their Department of Health and Human Services employees. They are experts. They're well trained, and they participated in the previous MIST program as well. But through these CARES Act monies, we're able to basically pay their salary while they still work for the county of Humboldt. But they can commit to four days a week, seven hours a day, each of them rotating on a daily basis to provide exclusive services here in Arcata. So really, that that aligns with so many things that we're trying to accomplish as a community, in particular, understanding that the police department isn't necessarily the subject matter expert in terms of the clinical response to someone with a a behavioral health need. Certainly, we're there to render the scene safe, but to be able to introduce then the experts who could triage and and then direct that person to the most appropriate resource is exactly what we're accomplishing here as a city. So personnel will be here four days a week. So personnel will be here four days a week, Monday through Thursday, from nine AM till four PM. They will accompany APD officers on any call where there's a behavioral health component. And they're basically going to focus on developing resource strategies for those who have regular contact with the police department. There are a lot of goals to this program, but I could really summarize them in three areas. Number one is we're still preventing the exposure and spread of COVID nineteen through a reduction in the number of people who are experiencing homelessness. I mean, that is the goal is to, for those who are homeless and those who have a behavioral health challenge, is to find them housing, find them shelter. Number two is to really develop this, well, this co-response between Arcata PD and DHHS personnel to provide immediate access to services. And on that note, really, the third goal is through these resources, we're supporting clients in their stabilization within the community. Now, within the staff report, are a list of those resources, those services that are going to be provided, and they number, you know, several. But they're, they basically include responding to a variety of needs, including those with, you know, who need mental health treatment, those who need treatment for substance abuse disorders. And it also includes, you know, employment training and preparation as well. So there are a total of six particular programs that are available through this MIST element. And what I've been told is that the Board of Supervisors has given their approval to the program as well. And we expect our clinicians to be here onboard at the police department next week. So what you'll be hearing about are the successes of this program and future updates, and we'll be collecting some data as well. I think what we want to focus on now that we have sort of the foundation in place is determining how can we sustain this? Because it's going to be an invaluable resource for many community members who need these resources, need this, need this stabilization. The MIST program here in the police department will be managed by our Patrol Operations Commander, Lieutenant Bart Silvers. And really, what's paramount is providing a safe space in which client needs can be triaged and a plan developed so that we can get them directed to the most appropriate help. And like I said earlier, the current level of funding is expected to provide these two clinicians for us for one year. And we're already at work trying to identify additional funding so that we can continue this program beyond one year. So that is our MIST program. It is, it's an exciting time. It is, obviously, it does a lot of things for us as a city. And it is in response to what we've heard, that national call for change, that demand for change. I think Arcata is setting an example that other communities throughout the country can follow. And bringing in a mental health component, the experts, to work alongside trained police officers, understanding what each of their roles are, we're actually really developing the model right before our eyes. So I'm excited about the future and the future updates. But for now, I'll turn it over and back to all of you to see if you have any questions. And thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief. Let's see, do we have any questions, starting with Councilmember Goldstein?
Thank you so much, chief. I really appreciate the update. I have like five questions, so I can ask them one at a time. I'm really excited about the MIST program. I think it's a really important step forward. And, yeah, I think it's just, it's a great move for our mental health care in Arcata. So I'm really excited. So, um. I guess, yeah, I think I just have some clarifying questions because I'm excited and interested. So on a MIST, or on a mental health, behavioral health call, an officer and a MIST worker would go out, who would be like in charge of that call? Who would be taking the lead on that call?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. And, you know, the, there are, each call is unique. There are no two calls for service are alike. Now, our MIST personnel are going to, in addition to going out with police officers, they have a caseload to work on as well. Plus, we also have quite a few people here in Arcata who we have contacted with several times. And, you know, they're, we're always doing threat assessments. So the MIST workers will also have the latitude to follow up with those who we've already gone out to on calls. But remember, they're going to be here for seven hours a day. Now, they may not be available all seven of those hours. They have breaks and meals and other work to do. They may get called away to an emergency. So they're not going to be able to interact with everyone who we receive a call for help or who an officer on views as needing some assistance right away. But to your question, ma'am, I think it really is going to depend. So let's say, for example, we get a call of a person armed with a knife who's threatening to kill himself. I can tell you without a doubt that the police officer is in charge of that call. And we will introduce the clinician at a time when that call has been rendered safe, that scene has been rendered safe. I do not want to place our clinicians in any situation where their safety is jeopardized. So, but that is one, that's one side. Then you have, let's say, another side where somebody calls us and says, I'm struggling. I, I need some help. I feel like I want to end my life. So I think that will be more of the officer and the clinician deciding right then and there when they arrive. Again, those first one to three seconds are absolutely critical. The body language, the facial expressions, do they have anything in their hands? Where is there, where are they positioned? Are they willing to come and walk toward us? The more we can get them away from their home, their car, the more we can make sure they're safe. And then we can transition very quickly to the clinician. So it really is going to be, you know, a case-by-case basis. But we are going to be cautious. I want to apply a cautious approach as we launch this program, and then we can make adjustments along the way. But I don't want to miss anything that ultimately gets somebody injured.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I also look forward to hearing, as you continue with experiences, how that kind of goes in developing a protocol around that. I think you actually touched on a few of my other questions with kind of what happened during those hours that a MIST worker isn't on call. And I think you kind of touched on that, that they have the ability to follow up at other times and still get that person connected with services. I was just wondering, out of, I guess, out of curiosity, when, is there, is there, I guess, a time of day or specific days that you and your officers are seeing more mental health-related calls? Or is it kind of just, it happens when it happens?
Well, you know, in preparation for questions like this, I did a little bit of a data analysis. Now, it's a very small period of time. It's January of twenty twenty. You might say, well, why twenty twenty? Well, my hope was to get through all of twenty twenty to give you a year's worth of data. But the more I went through our daily shift reports, the more I realized that I just, I'm going to run out of time. So, but in looking at January of twenty twenty, it primarily was daytime. And our day shift is from six AM till six PM. We had a few calls at night that ended up in detentions. But I would say seventy-five percent of our detentions were during the six AM to six PM timeframe. And I do want to give credit to Kelly Johnson and DHHS because we spoke, and you mentioned this, ma'am, about the off times or maybe even the holiday times. This past holiday that we had here in February, we had a significant crisis in Valley West. We were able to de-escalate the situation. This is a holiday, and we called Kelly, and she was able to provide a clinician from the correctional facility to respond out and help us negotiate a peaceful solution. It didn't happen until two or three days later. But that clinician was instrumental in getting this person to SV so that they could get the help that they need.
That's awesome. That's really great to hear. Okay, last one, promise. Is, so is this just for folks that are unhoused? Or if somebody is having a mental health crisis and calls in and they're housed, would a MIST worker also be able to go out on that call as well?
They would. Yeah, there's no limitations on this. If there's an, if there's an opportunity for the clinician to provide some assistance, then, you know, certainly, we will, we will bring them and we'll make sure that they're responding and providing help.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mayor, for the report and for answering all my questions. I'm really looking forward to hearing more going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's see, Councilmember Schaefer.
No further questions, but thank you, chief, for the update and really glad to see that the police department is doing this work, and thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar, any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the update, and I, too, am really excited for this program, and I hope to see it grow and become really comprehensive. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Watson?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the update.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, and I don't have anything to add as well. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
Taking a moment to check for public comments. We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay, well, thank you again, chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, under old business. Item B, declare continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic and authorize an online surplus auction bidding system to dispose of items during the declared emergency. May I have a staff report from City Manager Deemer?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. This item comes before you once a month to renew our emergency, our declared emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic and the city's response. Typically, you've just seen it on consent for the last few months, but we did pull this on to old business just to bring to your attention that we are requesting that you allow staff to do our surplus auction in an online format. This was actually something that the council tried back in twenty eighteen as in an effort to get some higher values on some vehicles that we were disposing of at that time. And it was well-received by the community, both local and people that wanted to bid on things from, you know, mostly just outside the area when it was, you know, in that kind of, because they do still need to come to the area to pick them up. We're not getting into a situation where we're shipping things at this point. So we are partnered with an online platform that specializes in governmental surplus auctions. And we would be proposing to do that this year as opposed to where we typically have in-house viewing, and then people need to submit sealed bids either by mail, and mostly they do just deliver them to City Hall. So if you have any other questions about our pandemic response, I'd be happy to answer those. If not, just to re-declare that and allow that provision to move forward for the online auctions.
Great, thank you. I'll now ask for questions, starting with Vice Mayor Watson.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein?
No questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No questions. Thanks.
I don't have anything as well. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
Before we check on that, just as a reminder, if you're logged into Zoom and you wish to speak on any particular item, please click the Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. And if you called in via phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. And each speaker will have two minutes. Is there any one, the attendees, that would like to speak on this particular item? We do not have any public comment.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic and authorize an online surplus action bidding system to dispose of items during the declared emergency.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will call the vote by roll call. Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you. And next, we are moving on to new business. Item A, appoint one new member to the Historic Landmarks Committee for a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a recommendation motion to appoint a member to the Historic Landmarks Committee or any questions from the council? Any, any motion?
I'll make a motion to, to add Ron Perry to the Historic Landmarks Committee. Second up.
I think for the motion, you may need to include the term end date. Sorry.
Sorry. I make a motion to add Ron Perry to the Historic Landmarks Committee, the term ending September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, I will call the vote by roll call. Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes. So congratulations, Ron. Welcome to the Historic Landmarks Committee. Okay, next, we have under new business, Item B, consider adopting Resolution number two zero one dash forty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata accepting the mid-year budget review and approving associated budget revisions for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and Resolution number two zero one dash forty-one, updating the City of Arcata master fee schedule for various fees and service charges. May I have a staff report from Finance Director, start, ah, Andrea, I'm sorry. I just, I get it wrong every time.
Sorry. Starship ski, and I apologize if you hear any background noise. I live above a gym, and they decided to start playing death metal at a quarter of seven tonight. So I hope there's no background noise, but thank you for the introduction. Tonight, I'm presenting the City of Arcata's mid-year budget review for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and I'm going to share my screens. Want to make sure that everybody can see the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, just making sure that everybody can see that. Okay, so good evening, mayor and council. I am going to start off with our mid-year budget review a little bit out of order according to our Agenda Packet. Going to start with the updates to our fee schedule. So as part of our mid-year update, there are two versions of our master fee schedule included within your Agenda Packet. Packet page one twenty-six is a clean version of the master fee schedule with the proposed changes included. And page one sixty-six is a track changes version. Two of the items I would like to point out are wastewater rate changes, which went into effect on January first of twenty twenty-one, reflecting a ten percent increase, which was part of our five-year rate schedule and was previously adopted by council. We updated the schedule to include those rate changes. And then also, our short-stay and vacation rental permit fee was included in the updated master fee schedule, the fifty-dollar initial fee, and then the twenty-dollar renewal fee. Estimated revenues of about four thousand dollars to recognize within the next fiscal year. And the remainder of the changes within the master fee schedule mostly administrative in nature. So as part of the overall mid-year budget update, I've split the presentation in between revenues and expenditures. This is a depiction of just the overall impacts to revenues between our adopted budget for twenty twenty-one and then what the proposed changes are as of mid-year. I will walk through some high-level changes related to groupings of different revenue categories. And that'll include our taxes and charges for services. What I did want to point out here, as you see in the bar graph, for the other revenue dotted item, is actually related to our wastewater treatment plant. So as part of our adopted budget, we included a total amount of about thirteen point seven million for other revenues within the adopted budget. However, as part of mid-year, I am reducing that amount by thirteen point four million. We initially had anticipated to already have received our debt financing for the wastewater treatment plant project. You'll see a similar reduction on the expenditure side when I walk through. You'll see a similar reduction on the expenditure side when I walk through that. Uh, but the timing for this will be reevaluated as we head into the budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I just wanted to show that it's a drastic change, um, from what we had initially included and had expected to have some of that financing online and associated capital outlays you'll see on the expenditure side. Uh, but the two, uh, major areas as far as revenue increases and revenue decreases will be the taxes and then the charges for services for where we're at year-to-date as part of our proposed mid-year, uh, budget changes or, or planned, um, updates. So, the overall revenue increases, uh, for the tax, uh, portion of our citywide revenues are comprised of a couple different tax items, our sales tax, our transient occupancy tax, our transactions and use tax, um, and also our motor vehicle and lood tax, and that's on the increase side. On the decrease side, I'll walk through a couple of different, uh, charges, uh, for our different service revenue areas and why we're seeing decreases, uh, between different rental fees, leases, uh, some general public safety fees and our wastewater service revenue, just to highlight a couple of those items. So, the next, um, high-level breakout is for what we're seeing for increases citywide. For one of the main drivers is our tax revenue. Uh, so, we are seeing a creep, increases, uh, which total about one point one million compared to our adopted budget figures, all related to various tax-related revenues. The highest being our transaction use tax, or our TUT, or Measure G, as we like to call it, um, of three hundred and twenty-four thousand compared to adopted budget figures. And this represents what we've received through the mid-year period and actual cash receipts. So, the proposal tonight for the updated mid-year budget is only increasing budget by what we already know, what we've already received uh, through the mid-year period. The same goes for our sales tax revenues with an increase of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, um, year-to-date cash receipts. As far as some of the drivers for why we're seeing transaction use tax revenue increase and sales tax increase, for the transaction use tax increase, we're seeing a transition since COVID, uh, started or the pandemic started to, um, online sales versus brick-and-mortar sales as far as overall increases for where we're coming at with our transaction use tax revenues compared to the same period in twenty nineteen. Uh, we are also seeing the Wayfair, uh, Act kick in, uh, fully where the outside-of-California retailers are paying sales tax revenues to the state of California when goods are being shipped from out-of-state locations. Um, so, those are some of the major drivers for the transaction use tax revenue side. On the sales tax side, we're seeing smaller decrease, or smaller increases compared to prior year actuals. And part of that is, uh, the recognized revenues with deferred. So, we had, uh, receipts we typically would have received in fiscal year nineteen twenty, but are actually coming in into this fiscal year, which are bumping up the revenue just a little bit, um, compared to the same time period in the prior year. Uh, we also have our motor vehicle and lood tax, which we're proposing an increase of two hundred ninety-eight thousand. Now, this is a tax which, although called motor vehicle and lood tax, it is a property, uh, related tax and the increase year-over-year is based off of growth factors for the City of Arcata. Uh, what we're including in the proposed budget increase here is what we've received to date from a cash receipt perspective and what we know we will receive through six thirty. Um, the same with our transient occupancy taxes. Uh, year-to-date, we've received about a hundred thousand dollars over, uh, what our initial budgeted estimates were. So, the proposal here at mid-year is to increase the proposed revenues by the amount of cash that we've received so far. Um, so, conservative in our approach going forward compared to our adopted budget by just solely utilizing what has been, um, already realized as far as additional cash receipts for these major revenue areas, uh, for our tax, um, increases proposed here at mid-year. And as far as the decreases for the service charge revenues, uh, one of the major drivers here, um, for the overall decreases, we're looking at about a five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar decrease citywide compared to what we initially adopted, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The largest area here is our wastewater service revenues, where we've been tracking month over month. Uh, some months have been greater than others as far as the revenues that have been realized. Uh, but those are more one-time revenues we've been seeing for connection fees, and since those are not necessarily reliable, uh, to project out for the rest of the fiscal year, the reduction that's being proposed here for the wastewater service charge is an overall reduction of about four percent or two hundred and sixty thousand dollars as far as the total service revenue decreases. And we would say this is attributable, uh, in part to shelter-in-place and COVID-nineteen impacts. As one of the main drivers of this decrease that we're seeing is reduced consumption, but reduced consumption for our commercial end-users as far as this particular utility is concerned. We also have an offset of close to ten thousand dollars, um, in non-payment penalty waiving of fees, um, as we currently are not locking our customers off due to health restrictions imposed by the state and being in the middle of a pandemic. Uh, we are not currently recognizing penalty or non-payment penalty charges. Uh, so, that is factored into this overall revenue reduction, uh, to have our budget, um, get us through to six thirty and be on target for where our wastewater revenues are coming in at. Uh, then our next largest decrease is related to, uh, mix of recreation programs and overall community-related rentals or fees. Um, and that is a major factor related to shelter-in-place and the inability to offer certain programs or due to the fact that we have certain COVID-nineteen-related restrictions, uh, across the board for recreation, but that also includes rents and leases such as our ballpark or our community center rentals that are being included in that total two hundred and thirty-something thousand dollar decrease, uh, to our general fund. We also have some miscellaneous charges, uh, related to public safety, such as vehicle release fees and fingerprinting services, but we're not seeing those revenues come in on target for what we initially had proposed as part of our adopted budget. So, overall, the decrease for charges for services, uh, would, uh, yield about a five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar decrease citywide for what we're seeing in the decreased, um, revenues as part of our mid-year budget update. And then, before I get into the total, um, expenditure changes for mid-year, just gonna pause there to summarize for the total revenues citywide. So, overall, the major drivers to the city revenue increases, uh, the total increase and decrease, decrease in revenue is equating to about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars citywide. The major driver for the increase is about one point one million dollars in various tax-related revenues, mostly consumer-driven for what we're seeing come in above adopted budget. Um, and then on the decrease to the revenues, mostly, uh, driven related to pandemic and shelter-in-place restrictions for the charges and service revenues of, uh, five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, as far as our citywide expenditures, similarly, uh, this is grouped by our various revenue sources citywide, and I'll point out one of the larger areas that have been impacted as part of our mid-year budget update. Uh, once again, the capital outlay line, uh, or bar chart item that's dotted is a representation of the overall capital outlay that was initially budgeted related to the wastewater treatment plant upgrade as an offset to the first round of debt financing. Um, and we are removing that as part of the mid-year budget update from a timing perspective. It will be reevaluated again as we go into fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to see how much needs to be budgeted for the debt financing side of the project and how much needs to be budgeted for the offset for the actual capital expenditures for capital outlay related to that particular project. So, the major area here, uh, as far as the increases to expenditures that we're seeing citywide as part of our, um, mid-year budget update, uh, includes capital outlays. So, right now, as part of proposed mid-year, we're seeing an increase to our capital expenditures of about two point two million dollars. And the, uh, main driver for this is we typically have brought projects, uh, that are budgeted in a prior fiscal year. So, we have a multitude of projects budgeted in fiscal year nineteen twenty, but completion of those projects may span multiple fiscal years, or we have best intention to complete those projects in one fiscal year and they're not completed until a later fiscal year. So, in total, about two point two million of increased expenditures citywide are related to capital outlays. Um, some notable projects that are included in that two point two million would be our old Arcata Road project, our Bayside Road paving project, water line replacement project. There's some, uh, several others that are also highlighted within the Agenda Packet on page one oh six and one oh eight. Very high-level, um, different items that make up that two point two million. I'm gonna skip ahead to the next slide. This is just a depiction of the overall capital outlays citywide and then what funds are impacted by those, uh, additional expenditures above and beyond the budgeted capital outlight, uh, capital outlays for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, within the, uh, water fund being one of the largest changes. Uh, about four hundred thousand of that is related to water line replacement. For streets of the five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, about four hundred and ninety thousand of that is related to Bayside Road paving for wastewater out of the three hundred and sixteen thousand, about three hundred and ten thousand is related to various wastewater treatment plant improvements such as oxidation pond upgrades. I'm gonna go back to the previous slide just to highlight the other items that are a little bit smaller, uh, that make up the total impact to citywide expenditures increase of three point nine. The capital outlays is only highlighting about two point two million of that overall increase. And then we have, um, one area as far as groupings called inter-fund or inter-government payments. This is responsible for an increase of about one point four million dollars as a part of the proposed mid-year budget adoption, and it is related to our Thirtieth Street project, uh, that will be kicking off, uh, shortly this spring uh, in conjunction with the, uh, UROC Housing Authority. So, one point four million is related to that project, and then we have a small change, uh, related to expenditure, our other expenditure category, which is all different, uh, grant-related expenditures where, uh, depending on, uh, as the departments reviewing, uh, through our mid-year budget process and understanding their work plans, uh, through six thirty of twenty twenty-one, some of the timing has changed with when the projects will be completed or certain programs will be completed related to various grant funding projects. One of those is related to our CDVG funding. Uh, about one point two million will be, uh, expenditures will be decreased, but there'll be an offset of revenues as well. And then that project will still continue onward in a future fiscal period, and those expenditures will be realized then. There's some other notable items, um, as far as projects for why there's an overall decrease um, in that expenditure category. And within our home revolving loan program and, um, within our CDVG revolving loan program, we have the projects, um, that are in, uh, process of being completed such as Soil Place Project, uh, within the, um, I believe it's the CDVG revolving program. We have the Sawyer, uh, sorry, the, uh, Boyd Road Sewer, uh, line extension project that is slated to be completed. So, there's some offsetting decreases and increases which make up the total four hundred ninety-three thousand of other expenditures. So, overall, for the total expenditure increase citywide of three point nine mil, or yes, three point nine million, about two point two of that is related to capital outlays, and I would say is one of the largest drivers citywide for the expenditure increases of how, uh, we're getting to where we're at as of mid-year budget update. So, uh, just taking a step back before I get into, uh, what the total impact is to our general fund reserves. Citywide, major increases on the revenue side relate to taxes, once again, about one point one million. Decreases are related to charges in various service revenues, about five hundred and twenty-two thousand. That's about three hundred and forty-four thousand in total increased revenues citywide. And then on our expenditure side, we're seeing an increase of about three point nine million. The largest driver there are capital outlay projects, which are previously budgeted for in nineteen twenty, but expected or slated to be completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one or thereafter. So, uh, overall, our reserves, uh, for general fund are coming in above what we initially targeted. So, reminder, our targeted minimum balance per our reserve policy for general fund is twenty-five percent. And this is to protect the city for any unforeseen circumstances such as a natural disaster or, um, a decline through economic, uh, downturn, what have you. So, as what we initially projected when we had our adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we were expecting a reserve of about thirty-one percent compared to that minimum of twenty-five percent. And as of our mid-year budget update, we're now expecting about thirty, thirty-two percent overall, um, reserve, uh, projected balance. Uh, the listing of all the projected fund balances are on pages one twenty through one twenty-one in your Agenda Packet. And then, as of our mid-year budget updates, if the proposed changes are adopted, we're expected to have reserves of about four point two million as of fiscal year, uh, end for twenty twenty-one. And then, as our initial budget was passed, our deficit that was estimated at the beginning of the adopted budget period was about three hundred and sixteen thousand, where we expected our expenditures to exceed our revenues. Now, with the mid-year update, that deficit has decreased, where we only expect our expenses to exceed our revenues by about seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. It's a positive change of about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So, before you tonight, are several recommendations related to the mid-year budget process. Historically, we have the, um, overall proposed mid-year budget for adoption or approval, um, for council. We also have the master fee schedule for recommended approval, but there's two other items we did want to note as part of additional recommendations for our mid-year budget adoption. One of those involves the, uh, recommendation to unfreeze one of our engineering technician positions. As you recall, when we went into our fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget cycle, even before that, um, hearing about the impacts of COVID-nineteen and the pandemic, any vacant positions we had here at the city were frozen as a cost savings measure. Uh, our engineering technician position was one of those positions that was frozen. Uh, we're proposing to unfreeze this as certain projects, such as our Thirtieth Street project, which will be coming online soon, is providing a funding source, at least temporarily for this particular position, uh, which would be, uh, over the next two years, where we have guaranteed funding, uh, to support this particular position being unfrozen. And if this was approved tonight as part of the budget, mid-year budget adoption, we would expect about sixty-eight hundred dollars of additional expenditures to be incurred in this current fiscal period, just from a timing perspective of when this person would be able to be hired on and active. Um, so, I'm including that as one of the recommendations for tonight. The other recommendation ties back into our general fund reserves and where we're at currently above our twenty-five percent, uh, minimum targeted balance. Uh, we're, we're currently believe we would be at thirty-two percent by the end of this fiscal year. So, the recommendation is to set aside the reserve amount above the twenty-five percent up to an amount of about point two million dollars to meet our city's SV one maintenance of effort requirement. And this is contingent upon if the pending legislation, uh, which would be relieving the city of, of this requirement for fiscal years nineteen twenty and then also twenty twenty-one is not passed. Um, there's additional information in your packet on the MOE on page one oh seven, and then the attached, uh, proposed legislation is on page two twelve. To give a little bit of background on the maintenance of effort requirement, um, on an annual basis, the city submits a report to the state of California. They review the streets-related revenues and expenditures. As part of that, there's a compliance requirement where, because of historical expenditures with the general fund support to the streets fund, we have an average balance, um, in past years of supporting streets projects with approximately one point five million dollars of general fund, um, monies to complete street projects. So, that minimum requirement is reviewed every time we submit the streets revenues and expenditure reports. The State Controller's Office, should we not meet that maintenance of effort requirement going forward, allows us in a subsequent fiscal year. So, for example, if we don't meet that requirement because we had shortfalls in fiscal year nineteen twenty, we're able to make that up in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And currently, what our projected, uh, deficit to meet that maintenance of effort requirement is over both fiscal year nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one is about one point two million that we would need in additional funding from general fund or any other discretionary source citywide to support streets funds to meet that maintenance of effort requirement. We do not meet this maintenance of effort requirement. We do put our SV one, uh, street funds in jeopardy. This is average between three hundred and thirty thousand or three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, funded by the state to support various street projects. Um, so, before you tonight is a recommendation, looking at where our general fund reserves are at the twenty-five percent minimum. Um, so before each night is a recommendation, looking at where our general fund reserves are at the 25% minimum and the fact that we're estimating a 30%, 32% balance by the time 630 um, is here, that that additional amount could be set aside uh, by council if you so wish to help fund that Maintenance of Effort requirement. Uh, and uh, another step back as part of the reductions through COVID-19, uh, we historically have funded the streets projects as the supplement from general fund through our transaction and use tax revenues or Measure G. Uh, this last year with the reductions in place, we've uh, appropriated or budgeted $375,000 from the general fund to support streets projects. In prior years, that could range up to 1.5 million. Um, so just to give you a sense of the drastic cuts that we did make to try to balance general fund going into the pandemic um, is part of the reason why we're not able to meet this Maintenance of Effort requirement. And the fact that our Maintenance of Effort requirement was based on some very robust years for the way that this was previously calculated. So this is a measure in the ca-, in the um, in the case if the uh, legislation is not uh, put into place to actually relieve the city, to have a, a plan to be able to meet that Maintenance of Effort uh, so we can continue receiving the SB1 monies. Um, and that is it for my recommendations. Uh, I thank you council for your time. Please ask uh, many questions. I'm happy to go back through my slides or pull up any additional detail as related uh, to our mid-year budget update.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, let's see, let's start with questions um, from Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, no questions at this time, but thank you for this update. Lot of, lot of good stuff, lot of, lot of stuff, but very, you presented it very well, so thank you, it was very clear.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
I don't have any questions, but I really do appreciate your presentation and laying all of this out for us. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
No questions, and thank you for the very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Uh, I don't have any questions and I'll go ahead and make a motion. Resolution number 201-40. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, accepting the mid-year budget review and approving associated budget revisions for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and resolution number 201-41, updating the City of Arcata master fee schedule for various fees and service charges.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, uh, before, thank you. Before we go to a vote, let me just check to see if there's any members of the public wishing to comment on this item.
And I did wanna just get clarification if the council does support the unfreezing of the one engineering tech and the set aside, uh, if the legislation doesn't pass for the SB1 funds. Just to make sure those were included or not.
So, and do you want that included in the motion?
Um, is, well, I want just full direction. So if you're all comfortable with that and your motion was just inclusive of the whole package, then I'm fine. I just wanna-
Yes, that, that was the intent, it was to include it, thank you.
Then that's fine, perfect. Thank you. Any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so since we have a motion in a second, let's uh, call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, motion passes, thank you. Enjoy your heavy metal ambiance.
Thank you.
The joys of remote work. Um, okay, uh, next, uh, we are at oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda this evening. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on the phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. When it is your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any public comment?
Taking a moment to check for a public comment, yes, we do. Um, we have Russell. Russell, you have two minutes, please, can you go ahead?
Am I unmuted it now?
You're good now, you're a little light as far as hearing you, but go ahead.
Can you hear me better now?
Still fairly soft, but I think we can hear you.
Okay, the, the issue that I would like to raise is that I reviewed the video of the last city council meeting and the staff's presentation of the Fickle Hill Crossing. And I think they gave you a formula for killing people and injuring people. And that may sound harsh, but for nine years, the city has not done a line of sight study up there. And they pretended that they did in the presentation, and I invite you to view the video of it. The line of sight parameters that they presented were absolutely wrong and false. I have communicated with the county and have the Caltrans Highway uh, Design Manual, 1971 roadway design manual and the Humboldt County Code, that's what they go by. And I just appeal to the council to go back and review. They can start at about uh, one hour and six minutes into it. And you will see things that are absolutely a lie and not truthful. And um, I do not want you folks to be part of killing or injuring somebody or destroying somebody's family because you didn't review it, but you did vote for it. So my request is that you go back and view that video so that you can be sure that you know what you're doing is absolutely correct and doesn't hurt anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, checking one more time for any public comments. We do have another public comment mayor. Um, it is a phone caller, uh, please go ahead, you'll have two minutes. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you-
There you go. Yep, you're good.
Okay, um, hi, Arcata City Council, my name is Ellie Noah Blake, I'm a professional in Arcata. Um, I just wanted to highlight with the program that the police chief discussed about bringing in a mental health professional. Um, I, I do think that this is the right direction and I do really support as much um, transition from police response to a mental health professional response when anyone is in a time of crisis. I do want to draw concern um, for myself and I imagine others of still having a police um, individual being the primary responder. I think that we need to push further to have the mental health professional be the voice um, directing those calls and responding as they see fit. I, I'm worried about the discrepancy of what that individual might see as um, unsafe and what a police might see as unsafe. Um, I think that a mental health professional could absolutely respond to a situation where, for example, someone had a knife in a way that would de-escalate the situation. Uh, that might be different than how um, a police would respond. And, and that makes sense, but I think that in those moments, we really need to question um, who is directing that moment. And so I, I hope that that's kind of taken into further consideration um, because I think that less harm will be imposed that way if we consider that in the future. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one last check if there is any more public comments that has not spoken yet. Okay, no more public comment, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, we are on to council and staff reports, are there any staff updates?
Nope, just look forward to seeing the council, the chamber of, or the council, the Chamber of Commerce Awards tomorrow night. I'll see many of you there.
Great, uh, Vice Mayor Watson.
The report, thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Councilmember Goldstein.
I don't have anything to report.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have a report as well. Uh, so let's see, uh, last on our agenda, dates of future meetings. Uh, we have a, have steady sessions to set the council's goals Wednesday, March 10th and Thursday, March 25th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via teleconference. So we have those all on our calendars, but to let the public know. Um, and then before we close, um, I did want us to adjourn our meeting in memory of Jeanne McCovey, who recently passed away. Um, I think many people uh, in our community are familiar uh, with her and her, her legacy of, of activism. Uh, she is a UROC elder, um, and uh, her loss has greatly impacted our community and uh, the contributions that she's made. Uh, I mean, are ingrained in this community's history. Uh, so I just want to take a moment uh, to recognize her, her legacy um, and the inspiration that she is uh, for many in this community. And so we insert in her memory tonight. Thank you, everyone.